Today, we are celebrating your 2022 Best Community for Music Education Award. This represents your second win, bravo. In 2022, the 24th year of, I'll call it the BCME, this program celebrates and recognizes innovative and resourceful music education programs in the United States and those schools and communities that support them. In order to apply for this award, Geneva had to complete a 54-page survey that covers pretty much every aspect of your music education program. This survey was developed in partnership with the Music Research Institute at the University of Kansas. Survey questions are aligned with goals for equity and access to music education for all students and with the national standards for music education. In 2022, just 738 districts earned this prestigious national award. This places your Edina Music Department in the top 5% of the 14,000 school districts in the nation, bravo. Geneva and I worked together to get your awards printed, framed, and delivered to everyone we could think of who was instrumental, pun intended, in making your music department so excellent. If for any reason we may have missed someone or made a spelling mistake, please alert Geneva and she can contact me so I can make those corrections and get the new awards to you ASAP. Now, I'd like to get some pictures, and I know you've got, Paul's got my stack of frames, and I think we were instructed to do which persons?
Dr. Stanley and Erica.
Okay, can you pull out those two? And, because we don't want to take too much of your time, we're just going to get a quick shot because Nam loves to see those and help us celebrate. Then I've got Band Parent Extraordinaire who's going to help us take the picture.
You got those? You got that?
If you could like step a little bit more on. Sure.
They need to step.
Congratulations.
Yeah, yeah. That's exciting.
If you could like try to like center in the Edina Public Schools, we've got to be proud.
Good. All right, thank you. Congratulations again. Yep. Yes.
for supporting them. Really appreciate it. We are now going to move on to hearings from members of the public. Pursuant to Board Policy 206, we ask that you do not duplicate information or make complaints about individual employees, board members, students in the district. Please direct these comments to the appropriate site administrator, the superintendent, or submit them in writing. The board typically does not respond to or have discussion to any issues presented, but questions raised during presentations will receive follow-up as directed by the board. And I would just like to remind speakers that your presentations are limited to three minutes. I don't think we have our clock displayed tonight, but I will prompt you when your three minutes are up. We have a group tonight speaking. We have Abby Miller, Zoya Hassan, and Kathleen Keely. They are here to talk to us about climate action. Welcome. Come on up.
And I'm Kathleen Kylie.
We are 10th graders at Edina High School, and we are new members of Project Earth, the environmental club at the high school this year.
We are here today to talk to you about how climate change is a pressing issue that needs to be addressed in Edina Public Schools.
I first realized my passion for the environment when I went to Rocky Mountain National Park in 4th grade. When I saw the landscape, I was in awe of how different nature could look depending on where you are. From then on, I practically dragged my family across the country to other national parks. And now these beautiful sights are being taken away from us because of climate change. For example, in Minnesota, our own ecosystem is being detrimentally affected by our warming planet. According to research by Lee Frelick, a forest ecologist, the Boundary Waters will eventually turn into a savanna if we continue to pollute our atmosphere.
I fell in love with the animals and planets that inhabit our earth when I took classes in camps at the Bloomington Nature Center. These are the things that make our earth the green lavish place we call home, but they are threatened by the overhanging doom of climate change. Bears have always been my favorite animal, so it's devastating to me that many scientists believe polar bears will be extinct before the end of the century. However, Dr. Stephen Amtrump, chief scientist of Polar Bears International, believes that if society gets act together, we have time to save the polar bears.
We joined Project Earth this year because we realized working together is far more beneficial than working alone and trying to face these huge problems alone. Changes in our school district's climate policies will reduce carbon emissions and inspire classmates and community to take action.
We thank you for all the work you've done and continue to do for our schools. However, as the city's leading energy user, Edina Public Schools is essential to reaching the city's set climate plan. We are asking for your help so that generations of the future have a chance to experience the love we feel for our planet. We invite you to join us on Thursday mornings at 7:45 in Room 231 of the high school to meet our group and work together for our future. Thank you.
We're going to move on to our consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
We will now vote to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. We now have two reports for the community and board. The first is on continuous school improvement planning process. We have Valley View Middle School Principal Toya Pryor and Dr. Randy Smazel.
Can you make sure that the video is actually working? Did you see the text message saying video is working?
Oh. We might need to take a moment to make sure our video is actually working, or your video is working.
Okay.
Is that going to be playing right now? Or can they start?
No, I mean the actual streaming. The streaming.
I apologize, it's our streaming. And thank you for your flexibility in moving to this meeting.
Thank you, Chair Allenberg, Superintendent Stanley, school board members. My name is Dr. Randy Smazel, Assistant Superintendent, and I am joined here this evening by the amazing Toya Pryor, our principal at Valley View Middle School. And we are here to talk with you about a process called Continuous School Improvement Planning, and from here on after, we'll call it CSIP. CSIP, that's our acronym. So our CSIP model provides the, provides support for the advancement of Strategic Initiative D4, which is to develop and maintain a culture of continuous improvement. Also note that this work advances many different initiatives that are in the strategic plan, but that one describes the overall. So what is CSIP? What is a Continuous School Improvement Plan? Well, we did some work in studying a book called Data Analysis for Continuous School Improvement, written by Dr. Victoria Bernhardt, who is an ed psych professor from California State University. And in her framework and in her model, she has really coalesced a dynamic process for school improvement to help translate goals and action steps and continual improvement thinking across all departments, across all sites. And so we have, for the first year this time, implemented that framework and are continuing to implement it and monitor it throughout the year. So the way the framework works is it starts with five key questions. Where are we now? How did we get to where we are? Where do we want to be? How are we going to get to where we want to be? And is what we are doing making a difference? And all of these questions have to work together in this process. When you ask those questions, what you're really doing is a deep dive, a deep analysis into what's going on in your school. Instructionally, from a culture and climate standpoint, you're going deep into that. The outcome of that deep dive is that you're able to establish site and outcome, or site and department goals, rather. You're able to clarify your action steps for accomplishing those goals, identify key indicators of progress that will tell you that you're progressing along the way, and have very clear metrics to understand when you have arrived at that outcome. And when you do that deep analysis, another element arrives, and that is that you truly understand the root cause of that lack of performance that you desire in that department or in that site. So again, this is a powerful cycle. Figure 1-1, the problem-solving cycle, is a powerful cycle to do that deep dive and to really get at something we call root cause analysis, really identifying what is the root of the issue. Many of you have dandelions in your yard in the spring, and when you get rid of dandelions, you grab them and you pluck them off, and guess what happens? They come right back because you have not removed the root. You have not addressed the root. And in school, continuous improvement, we have to really get down to that root level to change the outcome for the future. Otherwise, we're going to end up in that same spot. Figure 1-2 is a sample worksheet that administrators work through in part of the training. And one of the parts of the cycle is to really develop some hunches or hypotheses as to why that problem of performance is persistent for your site or for your program. And what happens is when you develop those hunches and hypotheses, the more of those that you brainstorm, the deeper you're going into that analysis. And what we see from those responses is that those deeper responses actually give us greater insight as to the cause of the root. And so we drive people to really go deep into that work. Figure 1-3 is a sample worksheet used for an activity where they take those root cause hunches and hypotheses and then turn them into questions, questions they can test, questions they need data for. And so it's really about trying to figure out, how do we answer some of the questions around those root causes? And Figure 2-2 represents the types of data that site leaders and department leaders and program leaders will need to collect to be able to answer their metrics and answer their, answer their progress along the journey of trying to meet that action goal. So whether it is demographic data or perception data, school process data, or student learning data, all of those will be different important elements to be able to evaluate truly a movement in a new direction based on that root cause analysis. So how is this being implemented across Edina Public Schools? Well, Dr. Stanley and I did a summer training for our administrators, and as part of that summer training, that was kind of round one, we would call that practice, we introduced this framework. The framework leads to the outcomes of academic goals and culture and climate goals. Those are two of the expectations that all of our site leaders would have in their plans. As part of that training, we also did some exposure work around a transition model of change called Bridges Transition Model. And what that transition model does is it helps, it helps leaders understand how to help staff move from point A to point B, and all of the steps that different staff might go through, all of the things they might experience as they're going through that transition phase. We also did some deep dive into dignity and what it means to have a dignified work environment and a dignified learning environment. And then lastly, we developed a rubric for our CSIP plan, a rubric that would tell us that this plan is culturally proficient. We then took that training and condensed it and repeated it a second time on our School Improvement Planning Day. On a School Improvement Planning Day, we had 140 staff from Edina Public Schools participate, and we had leadership teams from each of the sites. Those included administrators and other licensed staff from each of our sites. Once that School Improvement Planning Day was done, one of the outcomes was that we want to see the school improvement plans by the end of September inside of our dashboard. Dashboard is simply a Google spreadsheet where all of the sites and all of the departments add their plans. And by adding all of the plans to one single dashboard, what that does is it offers transparency and accountability across all of our leadership. It offers the opportunity for us to be better together as leaders are sharing their work and leaders are able to see what other people are doing to address action plans and root causes for their site or their program. And it makes it easy to find, easy to access, and easy to monitor. So how will we monitor that work? Well, each quarter, Dr. Stanley and I will visit with all of our principals and our site leaders, and we've already started that for the first quarter, but to just follow up with them and to analyze that progress, to provide feedback on the plan, to push thinking, to ask challenging questions, and to just have dialogue and ask, how can we support you in the work that you're trying to do at that site? I will continue to meet with principals monthly in between those quarterly meetings to just do check-ins and continue to figure out what resources do they need and how is that data collection going towards accomplishing those goals. One of the last elements that I'll share, and then I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Pryor to speak about her experience going through this process, is that we are also required from MDE, Minnesota Statute 122A-414, the altcomp goals that are required through that statute have to be turned into MDE. Those altcomp goals, or Qcomp site goals, I should say, are developed through this process, and then we're submitted to Minnesota Department of Education. We have received word from them that we are good to go for the year on those required district altcomp goals. So I would like to turn it over to Toya to talk a little bit about the process that she went through, her experience with this, and how this is manifesting itself at Valley View Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Smazel. So I'm just going to share a little bit about the process we followed, the data we used, our action steps, our KIPs, which is key indicators of progress, and then the metrics that we put in our plan. We started with, and when I say we, I mean my admin team, we started with looking at a comprehensive picture of our current realities of Valley View Middle School. So the framework that we used was something that I used in a previous district that helped us really lay out in deep detail where we stood at Valley View Middle School. So we looked at what is our vision at Edina Public Schools, which is for each and every student to discover their possibilities and thrive, and then we talked about what our mission is. Then we looked at our school environment, and I won't go through all of this because it's 32 pages, but I'll go over just a broad view of what some of the questions were that we went through as an administrative team. Some of it was describe the process by which the school learns about students' cultures and builds relationships between teachers and current students. Describe how the school creates an environment where students feel safe and respected before, during, and after school. Describe the school-wide behavioral system in place that aids in minimizing distractions to keep students engaged during instructional time. Describe how the school ensures social-emotional needs of all students are being, that all students are being met, which includes providing counseling, mentoring, and other student services. Other school status reports that we went through was what type of systems do we have in place to get student voice, family voice, teacher voice, and other, other staff within the district? We looked at our CSIP plan from last year, what goals did we have in place, what did we meet and what did we not meet? We looked at site council, who was involved in site council. So Valley View Middle School did not have a site council in place last year. We were looking at that for this year to be sure that we were getting more parent voice as we make decisions throughout the school year. We looked at some CSIP funds and how were we using funds throughout the school year to support our mission and vision. We looked at how many staff members we have, what certifications they had, who certified in reading. We looked at ML teacher status and things like that. We looked at how many teachers we have in the building that are first year. We looked at teachers that were in our building with one to five years of experience, teachers that had six to 14 years of experience, how many paraprofessionals we have in the building. We looked at teacher recruitment and retention strategies to be sure that the demographics of our teachers mirrored the demographics of our students. And we looked at other things such as current school status with MTSS, where were we in the process? Were our teachers, what did they understand? Had they been exposed to professional developments that they had or had not had? We looked at leadership teams, student leadership teams, staff leadership teams, and how did we continue to meet and grow our learners, adult and student learners throughout the course of the school year? We looked at instructional programming that we have, like PLCs, for example. When did they meet? How often do they meet? What does the agenda look like? When do we come back to agenda items? We looked at instructional strategies, and we looked at other ways that, other opportunities we had to meet student needs, for example, flex opportunities. So that's just a broad overview of the comprehensive current conditions that we have at Valley View Middle School. Now, from that, we decided as a team, this was done with the admin team, and then it was shared with our building leadership team. The building leadership team consists of someone from student services, building admin, someone from each content area, science, social studies, math, and ELA, someone from student services, all three of our coaches are on that, someone from the music department, someone from PE department, and we have a paraprofessional on our, on our leadership team. So after looking at the comprehensive picture of Valley View Middle School and where we stand to understand where some of the gaps were, we looked at how are we going to assess our current realities in terms of our dipstick and baseline data for the year? We decided to use FastBridge, which we'll use three times a year. And then for the climate and culture goal, we looked at our panorama data from last year. So our baseline data has already been collected for numeracy and literacy, and we decided to take the students that are in the high-risk or some-risk category and target, intentionally target those students in order to close the achievement gap. So our goal at Valley View was for 95% of those students to have typical or aggressive growth this school year. And so what we'll do is, as Dr. Smazel said, we have action plans, and then we have key indicators of progress, and then we have our metrics. So after we've gotten our baseline data, the coaches met with all PLCs, our PLCs meet every Tuesday. So coaches met with all of the PLCs to do what we consider a data dig to identify root causes. So we looked at all of the students that fell in the category of high or some risk, and then we created a plan for them. What do we have in terms of tier-one level supports in the building? What do we have in terms of tier-two level supports in the building? And what do we do for students who are in need of tier-three level supports? And what helped was the comprehensive plan of identifying what supports we had in place already, so we could determine if we needed to add or review anything additional. And then what we call it is reimagining evidence-based approaches that align with root causes. So really, you are looking at each individual student from the 32% or 27% to identify what they specifically need in order to be successful. So it could be something academic, or it could be something that falls in the behavioral realm. And one key piece of doing the comprehensive plan is that we know what supports we have in place, which helps us to clearly articulate to the team, to parents, and to students how we'll support dependent on their specific need. We have different things built into agendas, so it's called a Continuous School Improvement Plan, right? It's not a one-and-done. So we have to have conversations about how do we take this data and continue to come back to the data? So we have PLC meetings every Tuesday, we have grade-level meetings every Monday, we have, our building leadership team meets every Wednesday, and meet with student leadership teams, and I meet with family groups as well. And those are standing agenda items monthly that we come back and we talk about, how are we doing? We really take a step back and review our data and decide, do we need to do something differently? And that's the beauty of a Continuous School Improvement Plan, is that it's not done. We go back, we use our data, and that determines our next steps. So our key indicators of progress, again, is our PLC goals. They are aligned with our CSIP. Our CSIP is aligned to our strategic plan. We have weekly professional learning communities, that's our PLCs, and the staff is also able to identify students that have needs beyond tier-one. When you have 32% of your students that are high priority, I'd like to say, that tells us that we need to go back and we need to review what we're doing at a tier-one instructional level for students. And so that's a standing agenda item for us. We have formative and summative assessment data, and staff are able to cross-reference proficiency and progress on benchmarks and FAST as part of our KIPs, which is the key indicators of progress. And then staff is able to utilize proficiency scales to determine where support is needed. And then team teaching and modeling with coaches. It's very impactful when one of your colleagues is doing something really well, for you to go in and see that work, and then conference about that work, reflect on that work, and take those practices and use them within your own classroom. Some of the metrics that we're using is formative assessments and summative assessments. We'll use the FastBridge three times a year, fall, winter, spring, and then we're going to use MCA data. Now, that's only for literacy and numeracy, and I know that was a mouthful, but it's another goal, which is climate and culture, and that is for students and staff alike. So we had a list of questions for teachers of things that they had expressed that will help them convey to the team that their needs are being met. It ranged from professional development to how they feel, do they feel safe, do they feel comfortable, and all the things that really embody a healthy climate and culture. And so after the admin team researched a list of questions, we sent that to the building leadership team, and we shared it with EME for their approval, and then we sent that out as a survey for the staff. We'll do that three times a year, and then that is what we will use to drive professional development. So as we dipstick and find out where folks are, we have things built into the plan on a daily, weekly, monthly basis to help support the needs of, of teachers. And we kind of followed the same process for students as well. The questions were sent out. We really lean on our student leadership teams, and they gave us some feedback, so we thought we would have the survey out a little bit faster, but based on their feedback, we're going to make a couple tweaks, and then we'll get that out to them next week, and then we will use that to determine next steps to support them. So in essence, that's the Continuous School Improvement Plan. So in essence, that's the continuous school improvement plan.
So with that, we'll turn it back to Chair Ellenberg to see what questions our board has.
That was a lot of information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Board? Dan?
Just a question. Do you do anything in conjunction with Southview or like across the school pieces of it, or is it all funneled up through you, Randy, and then kind of shared across the different schools or buildings?
I'll answer first, and then I'll ask Toya to jump in here. So process-wise is the same at each site. All of them are using the same framework, the same process. What is unique might be what your data looks like, and then what action steps you might need to respond to that. What is also tight is that there is an academic goal and a culture and climate goal for both sites.
I would say, you know, this is the piece of connected autonomy, like everyone's doing a CSIP, everyone is following a similar process. The data looks a little bit different, and that is what drives your next steps. So we try to be in alignment as much as we possibly can. There are some differences, but we continue to collaborate on a regular basis because we know our elementary students and our middle school students are going to the same high school, and we want to be sure they're prepared.
Julie?
Yeah, I was just going to say thank you for this report. It was a lot of information, as Erica said, but it was really helpful to see this. And if you look at our goals, our superintendent goals and our board goals and the strategic plan, it is just so-- such important work. So I just really appreciate you coming to share that with us tonight and to all the other principals and lead teams for that work. So, thank you.
I just had one question. You answered part of it, which was how to align each of the strategic plan. I was wondering about that. How do you-- I assume each site is going to have things that they need to work on that might be part of the strategic plan, might be not part of the strategic plan. So I was wondering, how do you, in general, prioritize, knowing you have limited resources, just as a leader within the school system?
Well, our first priority is academic learning, so that's always going to be the first priority. But we know that we have to have a culture and climate base that supports a high level of academic learning. We know that from a culture and climate standpoint, it's important to understand where our staff are at so that they can bring the best of themselves to our learners. So from a district-wide level, we know that there are-- there's a strong focus on academics in the strategic plan. There's a strong focus on inclusive culture and climate in the strategic plan. I would say that is-- those are the high-level overarching concepts that we're really trying to drive down through each of the plans at each of the sites.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you guys bringing this information to the board. So, anything else? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next report is from me, and I just wanted to make sure that the board, the administration, and the rest of the district and our community had a good understanding of the process of seating the new board members, since it is different than a standard school board election. Hopefully, most people know by now that we do have a special election on November 8th to replace the vacancy left by Director Wallen-Friedman. The first thing I want to do is actually thank Director Goldstein for filling in over the summer, because this likely will be his last--
Regular.
--regular board meeting. Thank you for the terminology. So I would like to give him a round of applause and thank him-- --for spending your time and doing this for our district. I really do appreciate it. According to state statute, as soon as the special election is over and the election is certified, and whoever wins signs their oath of office, they become a full member of the board. Obviously, none of us know exactly when the election will be certified, but I assume it will be before our next regular board meeting. If not, that new board member will participate in whatever the board meeting is after that. But regardless, it is dependent upon the certification of the election and the signing of the oath. I wanted to make sure that the community understood the criteria that needed to take place for the seating of the new board member. And then, as listed below in the committees and assignments, just for ease of transition and due to the timing, because we do committees and assignments in January anyway, my suggestion was that whomever is elected, replace Director Goldstein on the finance committee, and then that we spread the other assignments around through us, so we're not asking a new board member to take an assignment for just one meeting and then we do them again. And so I had already reached out to Dan and Janie, and they've agreed to cover those schools for the month of December. So I want to make sure that the board is okay with the committees and assignments, but then answer any questions individuals might have about the process itself.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Of course.
For the board and for the community. One is, can you just talk a little bit about the new board member, the onboarding with MSBA? So they'll be training in January for the new board member, correct?
Yes, there's required training by the Minnesota School Board Association, and that will be taking place in January on school board finance and how school boards function. We will be doing additional training, Dr. Stanley and myself, about specifics to the Edina Public School District.
Okay, great. And then my only other suggestion would be, I agree with not changing the committees again for December, but perhaps the new board member could shadow those meetings with those board members since-- yeah, so it'll be six weeks or whatever.
Yep.
So that's just a suggestion if the rest of the board agrees with that, as an expectation.
Yep. Anything else? Great. Thank you. Okay, we are moving on to discussion items, and first up is our pre-K through 12 comprehensive literacy plan. We have our Director of Teaching and Learning, Jody D. St. Hubert, and our Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning, Bethany Van Oostel. Oh, good, I got it correct. Thank you, welcome.
All right, thank you, Chair Ellenberg, Superintendent Stanley, and board members. We're excited to be here tonight to update you on where we are with our pre-K through 12 comprehensive literacy plan. I'm going to turn it over to Bethany Van Oostel right away and thank her for being here for a long day with us.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you so much for inviting me to share. I'm always honored to share an update on our literacy programming here in Edina. I just have to say that I continue to be inspired by the level of commitment for excellence that lives in the staff and leaders here in Edina, especially around literacy. The early results that you were able to see in the board report are truly because of the people doing the work in the buildings, the principals, the teachers, support staff, coaches, and of course, our students. So as you know, last June, the board approved our pre-K 5 comprehensive literacy plan. In just one year, last year, I have to say, despite the year that it was, it was a very difficult year for our educators. So many said it was one of the most difficult years that they've had, and yet we were able to accomplish so very much in terms of our literacy plan. So many things to celebrate, and even more, the data sets that we have are showing strong initial pockets of success. It's exciting to see the science of reading research is living in K-2 classrooms already. The letters learning is really living. Teachers are really applying that learning, and it's already impacting students as we see targeted instruction around phonemic awareness and phonics fluency vocabulary throughout K-9, actually, at this point in the district. It's amazing. The instruction matching those student needs, being monitored by data on a continuous plan. And then MTSS, our multi-tiered system of support, is being defined day by day within our system across all tiers. I have to say that while we recognize all of these accomplishments, I do want to say that the last two years, there's been significant disruption in education. We know that. We know it's going to take years to fully unearth the impact of this global pandemic, and the waves of the impact from COVID-19 are being felt in literacy across so many areas and in so many levels and in so many layers. And because of that, I'm just going to say there are questions that we all have that we just don't have answers to yet. So there might be things that come up tonight that we're just still wrestling with in terms of really recognizing that there is so much impact still unfolding as we recognize the disruption that our students have had. With that, however, I think we're so proud to be able to say in Edina that we're really seeing many students gaining ground post-pandemic. Again, because I would say the dedication and intentionality of the staff and leadership, ensuring Edina always sets the bar high. Students are outperforming the state averages, also starting the year stronger than pre-pandemic in our early grades. And our early progress monitoring data even this year is showing already students are achieving success. I look forward to seeing the staff and students continue to thrive this year as we put the pandemic behind us and continue to use data, research, and effective practices to continue to define excellence and literacy in Edina. So with that said, what questions might you have?
Board members? Julie?
I don't have any questions. I thought it was a great report. It gave the-- it was fantastic information. I know the work is being completed in the classroom. So I really appreciate getting this look at things from at the start of the school year this year. There was so much work that was done with the assessments and with testing. So it looks like we're off to a really, really strong start this year. So I don't have any questions.
Sorry. The names are off because we switched.
You didn't want to call me Lenny.
Yeah.
The board member formerly known as Lenny.
Right.
Thank you for this report. I agree with Director Green. It is very all-encompassing, and our early results are showing some exciting things. I had a quick clarification question on-- and I know you don't-- I noticed you don't have your packet in front of you. On page 59 for us, there's a chart for early reading for K-1 and then the second and third graders, fall '21 to fall '22. Is that following the cohort of kids? Do you know what I mean? Like when we look at fall '21's grade two, and I look at fall '22, is that a new group of second graders? The top chart, where it says early reading, fall '21, fall '22, those are different groups of kids. So that's the systemic look, right? The systems look different kids. And then the chart below is the chart that follows the kid-- That follows the cohorts. Okay. That was really my only question. And then I know that you know this, but I just wanted to reiterate the importance of that consistency. And it was really important to hear from, as these buildings are making their building goals, that everybody has that literacy goal, and I know I hear it weaved, woven throughout, but that consistency piece is important. So thank you for your work that you're doing.
Can you explain to me, and I'll try to explain them, okay? Can you explain to me how FastBridge data, I guess how it works? So for example, when we do MAP data, it assumes like a growth rate, like a child's expected growth rate. How does FastBridge data work? So when it says 62%, what does 62% mean? What does 69% mean? Just because I'm not well-versed in the percentages.
Yep, that's really good. So 62% are the percent of students meeting benchmarks. So just like MAP, there are norms, and those norms set benchmarks. So the norms are set on the percentiles, right? So we set our benchmark at the 50th percentile. And so that just equates to a FastBridge score, just like MAP would. And then also, we also have growth targets that are set with that, based again on the norms and the achievement that's made by students that score similar things. There's a projected growth target, there's a goal growth target, and then we'll also get a growth percentile. We'll be able to look at those in the winter and spring, which is really nice. So it's really similar to that. It's again just a norming process, and it's just aligned to that. Each score is aligned to a percentile, just like when you take your child to a well-child check and they're at the 50th percentile, it's that same benchmark score, is that that's the middle of, in a room full of 100 kids, that would be in the middle. And so it's really similar to that in terms of its norming process and its percentile equation, national percentiles. FastBridge also does have district and school percentiles also.
So then, if I'm reading this correctly, on the same chart that Karen, or the same page Karen was talking about, the FastBridge cohort data, where it compares last year to this year, so like for first grade, for example, 72% were meeting kindergarten benchmarks. 59%, so it was a drop of 13%, but it's a comparison to if they're meeting first-grade benchmarks.
Yes.
So it's not a comparison of how they're doing on the same test.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
And that's why I did put the little asterisk there and noted and just showed what does change. And again, because of how we look at the development of a literacy learner, this is appropriate to expect this change, so it doesn't negate the data. But it is important for us to note that the things they're being asked to do are different. I say it's, again, to go back to the well-child check, right? It's like they ask different things of our children, depending on their ages and their stages in development. So this is similar to that. So again, the norming process is what allows us to lean into these percentages, but knowing that what's being asked of kids is different, especially in that early reading. That's the one test that does change, because the growth and the development of the literacy learning happens so quickly in K-1.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood the data.
Can I add one more thing?
Of course, yep.
I think when, as our teachers, as all teachers, because I've now been involved with FastBridge across four districts, as teachers learn to use this data, oftentimes, they can be surprised even from, in kindergarten, from fall to winter, because the benchmarks increase every time. So we're no longer just looking at, is a student able to identify their first X number of letters like we wore in the fall? In the winter, that benchmark has increased. And that can kind of throw teachers off a bit, because that's not a way that they've been used to using data, even in the-- and especially, I would say, in the context of MAP testing. And that's what brings the difference that we see with FastBridge, and that's what does allow us to see some of that accelerated growth, once we position our teachers to really understand that data super well. And so that's why digging into the data has been so important and why we're so grateful for the work that our coaches are doing to make sure that happens, and why we needed to collect that data as soon as possible, and why the connect and assess days made such a difference for our students and for our teachers this fall.
Other questions or comments? Go ahead.
I would just make a comment that I'm really pleased for that additional definitional component of what FastBridge is actually trying to do, because I think it does set the tone for, it's not just getting to the benchmark that was in the previous period or whatever it is, because there's a constant acceleration component. Real success comes from not, did we just grow kindergartners from 75% to 80% or whatever it is, but okay, two years from now, those kindergartners, now they're in second grade, how are they seeing the progression of the, from that standpoint? It sounds like FastBridge is enabling us to be able to do that, so that we have a better understanding of how well the comprehensive literacy plan and strategy execution is actually accomplishing the ultimate goal. Is that correct? Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I guess the question there is, is that when then you see, when you see like, you know, you can look at all the green, and then you can look at the white, you know, as far as the differentials that then happen from that standpoint. I guess I'm curious as to if you then see in a particular band of students, a drop, like from third grade to fourth grade, then what is typically happening in that process for those students with those teachers? Is there extra things that are happening to kind of get them accelerated back up to the level that we want them to be at, so we don't see that drop off? Can you just spend two minutes on just discussing how that process works? Given that you now have data that's indicating this, but now what do we do with it?
That's a really great question. I was just with our AdSIS teachers on Friday. AdSIS is one team of teachers that we have that can come in and help support students when we see, we're able to lay out the data and look and see where the student needs are, and they can prioritize based on pockets of need, like you might see here in a certain building. This is district-wide data, of course, but buildings are able to dig in and find those and then use the resources that they have, whether it be some Title I teachers or AdSIS teachers. And then we also know our classroom teachers are becoming equipped at elementary level during their win blocks to also administer some of these interventions. And I just want to give a shout out, because they're working really hard to learn this. It's coming-- And so how each building does it depends on their resources. But I would say having this data, and what happens with FastBridge is you give the screener and then it gives you your list, your class list, and it identifies what the needs are right there. And so every one of our buildings, K, elementary through high school, had data meetings, and they sat in and they looked at the needs that were coming up, and then they were deciding how they were going to meet those needs based on their resources.
And I guess this is a follow-up to that on the resource question, because I think that kind of does fall into this area. Have we found in those analysis, the resources that are needed in order to address there, do we feel that we have what we need to be able to do that? Or are, should we expect requests, you know, in, in areas and highlights from areas that we maybe need more?
Yeah. This is the first time we're really giving this a screening assessment, the first window that we're seeing. And so I don't know that I can answer that for you yet. I know that we, we have needs and we have more needs right now than I think we've had in the past. And again, that goes, goes forward to what I started in the beginning of talking about the pandemic. We're all, we're all across the world looking at this now, right? And so I can't fully answer that, but I will be able to answer that even better this winter and this spring, when we see the trajectory of the impact of what we're doing right now.
And Bethany, can you talk just a little bit about, so Stacy completes the, the FastBridge assessment, and then you as a teacher, what you would be able to do to learn about me and say that it comes out that I need affluency intervention? What, what immediate resources that FastBridge provides for that?
Yeah. Our team that went through it last year, this was the one thing that they said that they loved, was the, how actionable FastBridge data is. And so what happens is we give a screening, a screening, depending on the grade level, you give the screening, screening assessment, and then a, a report is generated in FastBridge called the Screening to Intervention Report. And it lists out all of the students and it gives all of their scores. And FastBridge gives a, a battery of assessments, so it has data to triangulate in order to generate a screening to intervention plan. And so all the students will have some plan. It might be on track, or it might be phonemic awareness. From phonemic awareness, it might be a specific intervention onset rhyme. And from that, you can print off the lesson plan, and it will give you the materials needed, it will give you the step-by-steps, it gives you the time needed. I say that FastBridge has been, it's really sensitive to the capacity of what we have, the resources, to your point, in education, where the interventions are usually 15 minutes or less. The resources are there for the teachers, they can just follow the plan and they're scripted. And so to Dr. Stanley's example of affluency intervention, affluency is, we're seeing a need in affluency in our third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. And so it's a, intervention is generated called partner reading, and it's being done across the district, where kids get together and the teacher guides them in a process of taking turns reading a passage together. And why FastBridge interventions are powerful is because they're very targeted and specific. And so with that affluency intervention, you administer that affluency intervention very intentionally for a specific amount of time. Usually it's eight weeks or so, and along the way, you're progress monitoring to see if it's working. And you're using, again, affluency check to monitor that progress. And so teachers are able to administer the intervention and also monitor it within FastBridge also. And so it really is, I call it kind of a one-stop shop. I didn't have this when I was in the classroom, I wish I did. We had to kind of make our best guess around what kids might need, but this is very prescriptive. So I know that was a long answer, but it's, it's a tool that's really, really incredibly valuable right now in terms of matching that need to what, matching the instruction, excuse me, to the student need, and then allowing us to see if what we're doing is working.
Really quick, one last question. Given how new this is and how we've been working through it, have you had a chance to get any feedback from parents' perspective of what's been happening along these lines?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I have not. I've been hearing from teachers. It's, it's very fairly new at this point. Have you been, have you had any parents contact you? Not at this point have we heard from parents, but we've been hearing from teachers that are seeing pretty, pretty quick results, and qualitative, not just quantitative, so.
I mean, I understand, because I have my own student who saw this and so on and so forth, but I think, given how important this is and what's happened within the community, I would just have you consider, at some point, when do you think that that type of feedback would come into play, whether with the teacher, with the parent at a conference, or more broadly? I think that would be helpful for us to understand broadly how, how that's going to go. Because these wonderful explanations we just had tonight, I think are very helpful to the parent.
Absolutely.
And the more we can kind of reinforce that part, I think is, is helpful to the whole execution and success of the program.
Absolutely. That's great feedback. And we do have a parent communication plan, so there are, there have been a lot of steps of like, okay, here we're at this point in the process, and this is our next step with parent communication. So with elementary conferences right around the corner, there will be some support and conversation and that opportunity, but we will embed more of that feedback.
That's a great idea.
Thank you so much.
That was actually my question that I was going to ask, is if, if we go into our new data dashboard, or new dashboard that we're using, if parents can see that FastBridge data at this moment, or is that information that's conveyed to them at conferences?
That's a great question. We've been working hard on that plan.
Okay.
So we have a plan to, we're taking time right now to really fully communicate out what's coming with our staff, preparing our staff to answer questions. There's a fast, it's called a fast family report that will be coming out mid-November. And so teachers at the elementary level are using the time at conferences to kind of share what's coming and the information that they will be getting, and then that report will be coming home for elementary families. And then the data will be forward-facing at that point in time when, when buildings send that out, so.
Appreciate that, because sometimes if you see the numbers on there and you don't know how to interpret the data, that's, I appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into that.
Yeah. We've put out a couple of screen casts on, in the know, just so that parents kind of know what to expect when they're, when they're getting that. It's new data, it's new information.
It is. And we want to make sure our teachers are empowered and our administration is empowered at the building levels to be able to answer questions as much as possible. Of course, we're always here, but yet that, that empowerment and that ability to answer questions directly related to their students is important. So we want to honor that time that they need to really fully understand.
Thank you both very much. Great work. Thanks. We're going to move on to our policy review. Director Green?
Thank you, Chair Allenberg. We have two policies up for discussion tonight. Just a reminder that we have a policy committee that meets, there's three board members along with administration. We meet regularly to review policies, and most policies are reviewed on a four-year cycle, with a handful of them that are renewed annually and looked at annually. Each of the policies that are reviewed are looked at for clarity with district practice perspective, alignment with our strategic plan and core values, state statute update, any updates there? Also, MSBA is a partner that we use for review and guidance, as well as a look at an equitable approach to our policies. So with that, we have two policies that are up for discussion tonight. First is Policy 105. It's School District Mission Values Vision and Strategic Direction. This policy was updated to reflect the current plan. It had not been updated for quite some time. And so the one thing I would note is that we built in some clarification and direction on planning, and how important the feedback is from the community for the strategic planning process, and what that timing could look like. So I don't know if anyone has any questions about this one. Okay, fantastic. That will come back for action next month. Our next policy is Policy 108, School Attendance Boundaries. It's a very straightforward change, just to make sure that this policy does reflect our in-person learning. So I don't know if anyone has any questions on this one. Excellent. So that will come back for action next month as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We're going to move on to our action items. Do I have a motion to approve the construction bids for Countryside Elementary?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Well, welcome Business Director Mert Woodard. Oh, and we have a guest.
Good evening, Chair Allenberg, members of the board.
Do you want to turn that on? I don't think it's.
There you go.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Allenberg and members of the board. At the special meeting that took place on September 30th, the board approved 69% of the construction contracts for the Countryside Elementary Edition project. The remaining 31% are being recommended for action at tonight's meeting. If there are any questions, I'll take those at this time. If not, the recommended action is before you.
Questions? All those in favor of approving the construction bids for the Countryside Elementary Edition, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The countryside, or the construction bids for Countryside Elementary Edition are approved. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the ratification of sale for Certificates of Participation Series 2022A? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Back to you.
Thank you. At the regular meeting that took place on September 19th, the school board passed a resolution authorizing district officials to take bids on the certificates of participation that would finance the majority of the Countryside Elementary Edition project. The parameters within that resolution authorized the district to take bids of up to a maximum of 5% in true interest cost, and the estimated amount of the bond was about $14.6 million. Bids were taken on October 12th. We've got some very good news to report tonight, and our municipal advisors are in attendance to provide that information for you.
So good evening, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Stanley. My name's Matt Hammer from Ellers, and I'm, like Mert said tonight, or earlier, we have some really good news to report. We did take bids on the district's certificates of participation last Wednesday. There was a true interest cost limit put in the resolution that was adopted on September 19th, and we ended up with a 3.85% rate, so well underneath that parameter. With that result, Mert and the treasurer, Michael Birdman, awarded those certificates last Wednesday. So the resolution tonight is really just to put a stamp on that. We did receive four bids as part of that sale. We like to see at least three, specifically when we're talking these types of deals. We don't normally see quite as many bids, but it was really good to see those four bids, and Baird out of New Jersey was the low bidder. So as part of those results, we also received a significant premium, which allowed us to stick within that parameter, which was put on the district's preliminary levy. So not only did the, the lower interest rate allow us to hit that levy mark, but we were able to generate about $300,000 worth additional proceeds as part of the issuance as well. So with that, that's a overall summary. There's, there's the amortization schedules included in the sale day report, as well as the rating report. The Moody's did affirm the district's AAA rating, which is an important piece to point out as part of that process, that you did go through a rating process. And on the district's general obligation bonds, the AAA rating was affirmed, which is, speaks to the outstanding leadership the district has had in both finances, as well as the board and superintendent.
Are there questions from board members?
No, I just want to say thank you. That was outstanding work. Thank you.
We will now vote to approve the ratification of sale, Certificates of Participation Series 2022A. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ratification of sale for the certificates of participation is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for your work. We're going to move on to a few travel approvals. Do I have a motion to approve the Edina High School student travel for the South Korea Exchange Program? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
I'd like to welcome Director of Teaching and Learning, Jody D. St. Hubert, and Assistant Principal Jen Carter.
Hey, good evening, Chair Allenberg, Dr. Stanley, and board members. We have the South Korea Exchange Program in front of you for approval tonight, and the only thing that I want to point out is that the MOU, the formal MOU that we had in place with the first exchange, is still being worked out, simply because we have, want to be respectful of culture dynamics, and the team wanting to have a formal-type meeting. The first request was in person, and we're, again, just working through those dynamics of that formal MOU. Otherwise, the report is as it was when we brought it for discussion.
Questions or comments from the board? We will now vote to approve the student travel South Korea Exchange Program. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The South Korea Exchange Program is approved. Do I have a motion to approve the student travel learning experience for Spain? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Back to you.
Hey. Our Spain travel experience is in front of you, just as it was for our discussion. We are excited about moving forward and teaming with our high school community to offer this opportunity for our students.
Are there any questions from board members? I was, can you just give an overview really fast of what this is for anyone watching the first time?
Yes, absolutely. I'll, I'll turn it over to Assistant Principal Carter.
So in February of 2020, prior to the pandemic, this trip was approved by the board. It obviously went on a halt over this time. Through that time, we've worked with a travel vendor that's EF. There were some trips that were canceled during the pandemic, and there was the ability to offer this as an alternative to families who maybe had a younger child. We have never advertised this trip to the community, so we're seeking your approval to be able to offer this opportunity to travel to Spain in the summer of 2023.
Thank you very much. Okay. All those in favor of approving the travel experience to Spain, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The student travel experience to Spain is approved. Thank you both.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our Kids Club Wage Increase. Do I have a motion to approve the Kids Club Wage Increase?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. We have Dr. Anne Marie Leland, Director of Community Education Strategic Partnerships. Take your time. Sorry.
There we go.
I apologize, we also have Director of Human Resources.
Oh, hi.
Sonia Saylor here.
Hello. Okay, so we have, again, the Kids Club Retention and Hiring Strategy Proposal for action by the board, that we would like you to consider approving tonight. Are there any questions or follow-up to the information that's been provided? Oh, yeah. Okay, great.
Board members have questions or comments about this?
I have, I just have a question. I know we discussed this last, last week?
Yep, last Monday.
That was last Monday, okay. But can you just give us another kind of understanding of kind of the break even with the hiring of the, that part of this report? I think it would be helpful to hear that again.
Sure. So the break even numbers that we have in here, and Mert, who's just stepped out, calculated for us, is an additional six staff. So, so we've already committed the, the amount for the incentive. So that, that aside, the break even would be $125,664, and of course, that's projected and calculated based on current information, and that would give us 90 additional Kids Club contracts. So that would be our break even point. And, and I know you didn't ask this question, but we continue to get applicants and we continue to send Sonia and her team recommendations for hire, so we're continuing to see an uptick and an increase in staffing.
So the additional six FTEs, if you got them, would allow us to get 90 people off the waitlist, and the revenue that would then come in from that would then pay for the increases that we're, would be approving tonight?
Yes, with just a caveat of if we have students that need those specialized services and those one-to-one, we really need to honor those requests and needs, and so we need to hire based on that. So instead of six, it might be seven, but again, we're just giving you a general overview of what that looks like in terms of break even.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yep, thank you.
And could you please provide the community, as Director Green mentioned, we did talk about this in a work session, but could you provide the community some of the background with the feedback you've received when trying to recruit?
and those one-to-one, we really need to honor those requests and needs, and so we need to hire based on that. So instead of six, it might be seven, but again, we're just giving you a general overview of what that looks like in terms of break even.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yep, thank you.
And could you please provide the community, as Director Green mentioned, we did talk about this in a work session, but could you provide the community some of the background with the feedback you've received when trying to recruit individuals about the wage and if a wage increase would help recruit more individuals?
Sure, absolutely. And of course, I would defer to Director, Director Saylor as well. But the feedback that I've received is from parents, oh my gosh, it's getting late, I'm so sorry, parents mainly around just wanting to pay whatever it is to get more people hired and more people interested in these positions. The positions are competitive with, within our like districts. And this would put us in a really competitive position within those districts. So we are aligning the feedback from the parents and trying to honor that and be the most competitive provider of wages.
And could one of you speak more to where our wages would rank as far as being competitive with other districts?
So based on the, the comparisons that our Community Education Department did, it would put us very competitive with the other Lake, Lake Conference districts. It also, however, brought into this conversation was our Community Ed Department had people declining the positions, not just because they were going to other Lake Conference after school care programs, but they were going to other, you know, to Target and to other corporations and organizations around us as well. And so it's also to compete with those areas, not just our school-aged childcare. But this would put us in a very, a highly competitive, we would be, we would be right on target with Eden Prairie, right on target with YZDA. We actually would be a little bit higher than, I think, a couple of those districts when it came to the, the lead rec leaders, not much, but to keep us right in there, in a competitive place. And as we discussed during the work session, this particular handbook is up for review again for next school year. And so we'll be able to do a comparison again at that time and make a determination as to what type of increase, if any, should be recommended for these particular positions for 23, 24.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
I just have a question, and it's probably for Chair Allenberg and the board. Is there, because this is an issue that we've been working on now for a couple of months and it comes before us every couple of weeks, is there, is there an idea of when, how, like, when might we see another update as far as like where we are on the waiting list? Or is that something that's reasonable, that every couple of months or so we would see?
Okay. Yeah, absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. We'll now vote to approve the Kids Club Wage Increase. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The wage increase is approved. Thank you both for your work with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve Policies 101, 102, 103, and 104?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Director Green?
Thank you, Chair Allenberg. We have four policies up for action tonight that were discussed in our last regular works, or last regular meeting. They are Policy 101, Legal Status of School District. Policy 102, Name of School District. Policy 103, Equal Educational Opportunity. And Policy 104, Complaints Students, Employees, Parents, and Other Persons. Does any board members have any questions about any of those policies? Okay, excellent. Thank you.
We will now vote to approve Policies 101, 102, 103, and 104. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Policies 101, 102, 103, and 104 are approved. That is all for our action items, so I want to see if there are any on-board committee updates.
May I just do a quick 287 update real quick? So as the representative of Edina for the Intermediate District 287, we had our board meeting last Thursday. One key thing that was presented was that they actually have a cabinet program that's actually brings together members of commissioners from the state of Minnesota, Department of Education, but also many other parts, to come and actually talk and learn about programming, like at Intermediate District 287, talks about the needs that they have, the funniness, issues that they have. And so there's a lot of discussion about that. The other districts that are representative in 287, they were talking about their LACs and how they were also trying to get involved with that. So there might be more to come for the LAC for Edina to look at from that standpoint. And then lastly, 287, both the superintendent and their chair of the board are eager upon request from us to come and represent, present to the Edina School Board to give an update on what's happening at 287 and all the great things that are happening and the challenges that they have. They were just asking for what would be the best dates for them to consider. They said they would make whatever we offered to them, they would make that work. So I just wanted to put that out there for a response. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there a superintendent update?
I always like to talk about the great things, and this was mentioned earlier, but once again, I'd like to let the public know that we take seriously our operational excellence and just really delighted that we are once again, one of three districts in the state of Minnesota that has a AAA rating for our financial status. And again, I want to thank our Director of Business Services, Mr. Mert Woodard, for his work on that in pulling together all of the documentation and preparing to meet with, with Ellers. So thank you for that, Mert. Also, we were named once again the number one college prep high school in the state by niche. I believe, Daphne, is it four or five years running? Five years running, so I am delighted about that. And then, of course, you know, we started out the evening with the Schmidt designation and the award for Best Music Education. I just believe that these items represent just the essence of our strategic plan, our core beliefs, our vision, and our mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. And an excellent segue, speaking of our strategic plan, one of those is community partnerships. And I wanted to make sure that I thanked the Edina Education Fund. Tonight in our consent agenda, we approved a $335,000 donation from the Edina Education Fund. We have Kathy Rendelman here. So thank you for leading the Edina Education Fund along with a lot of other volunteers. And thank you to everyone in our community who's donated to the Edina Education Fund. It makes a huge difference to our district. It's detailed where those donations are going, but I would be remiss if I didn't publicly acknowledge you guys and the donation to our district, so thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We will now vote to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.